Would everybody please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? And Luke, I was going to ask you if you would lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance tonight.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Luke. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Coin, hair, Hazel Tyne, Lamb.
Here.
Rose.
Here.
Shields.
Here.
Simpson.
Here. As you will notice, we are a little shorthanded tonight. There's only four of us this evening, and I will be filling in as council president this evening. Reading of the minutes.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to accept the minutes from our October 11th meeting as prescribed by our clerk of counsel, Kathy Patton.
Second. Second by Ms. Rose. Any further discussion on the minutes? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Motion passes 4-0.
Reports of standing committees. The Finance Committee met before tonight's meeting. Our next meeting will be before the council meeting on November 14th. Health, Safety, and Sanitation, Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. President. At this time, there's no meeting schedule, and I have nothing to report.
Public Properties. Public Properties met on October 12th. We have one item that moved on to Finance tonight. We talked about pickleball courts, and then we also talked about revamping the skate park at Reagan Park. Waters and Utilities is Ms. Hazel Tyne, who's not here. Streets and Sidewalks would be Mrs. Hare, who's not here. Special Legislation, Mr. Lamb?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have nothing to report, but I have a meeting scheduled on Wednesday, November 9th, at 5:30. The agenda for the meeting will be a discussion of flags, flying flags on public property. That's basically the agenda for the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lamb. And finally, Emergent Technologies, Mr. Rose?
Thank you, Mr. President. Nothing to report, no meeting schedule.
Thank you. Reports for council action, we have several. For the Finance Committee, 22234, an MOU with the county regarding sanitary sewer replacement for our West Smith Road reconstruction project. 22235, amend ordinance number 139-22, bids for the West Smith Road reconstruction project. 22236, storm water operation and maintenance agreement with Sandridge Food. 22237, grant application, I'm sorry, amend civil service rule 8K3. 22238, grant application for body worn cameras for the police department. 22239, purchase three 2023 Ford Explorers for the police department. 222-240 for the sale of fire apparatus for the fire department. And we added one Finance Committee request for council action today, 22241, increased expenditures for absolute construction for a chip project. Reports of minutes to officers, Mayor Hanwell?
Thank you, Mr. President. Information on the proposed deer hunting ordinance and facts are posted on the city website Parks page. They were also sent out with the October utility bills. Respectfully ask the residents and voters to view same, to be properly informed. On October 18th, the Medina Municipal Court, Valor's, Valor Court, or Veterans Court, had its first graduation. I attended and presented the resolution the council passed to their first graduate, Brandon Hux. I'd like to congratulate Brandon, and thanks to Judge Gary Warner for implementing this new program. Feeding Medina County is having the eighth annual turkey drive to support families in need of help for the Thanksgiving holiday. And that turkey drive is going to be November 16th from 5:30 PM to 7:30 PM, 5:30 to 7:30 at Farmers, Medina Farmers Exchange, 320 South Court. And they're accepting donations of turkeys as well as cash, if anybody is interested in helping out with that. That's November 16th. The Candlelight Walk and Tree Lighting, this is the 38th event. It'll be the weekend of November 18th through 20th. The Tree and Downtown Lighting Ceremony will start on November 18th at 7:00 PM. And I'd like to thank Main Street Medina for their efforts in putting this event on, and the vast amounts of people who come to attend and see our beautiful community and support our local businesses. And last, I would like to mention that Medina Police, I know Joe Toth is here, the director of LST, but he sent me an email that on Thursday evening, 10:20, October 20, we, our police officers helped with removing a patient that the medics were having difficulty with on their own. And then in the early morning hours of October 21st, two of our police officers were on scene and actually delivered a baby girl while the ambulance was still responding. And this just speaks to the great collaborative model we have of police and medics and fire all working together in a team effort. And I believe at our November, first November meeting, Joe and some of the representatives of Medina Hospital are going to attend to recognize the officers that were involved. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Hanwell. Our Finance Director, Mr. Keith Durham?
Thank you, Mr. President. At our last meeting, I reported that a referendum petition had been submitted regarding ordinance 162-22. There's a 10-day period that I'm required to hold that for. That ended, and this morning, that petition and some associated documents were transmitted by me to the Board of Elections. My understanding is now the Board of Elections has 10 days to validate signatures and let us know if there are sufficient valid signatures.
Thank you, Mr. Durham. Mr. Greg Huber, Law Director?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report.
Thank you. Police Chief, Mr. Ed Kinney?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report.
Economic Development Director, Mrs. Kimberly Marshall?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report this evening.
Thank you. Chief Building Official, Mr. Dan Claddish?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just to share some information, we continue to see growth and improvement taking place along North Court Street. There are five projects that include the recent completion of a remodel and expansion project for Bumblebee Village Daycare, the Wendy's Restaurant Demo of an existing building and replacing with a new building, city barbecue expansion and alteration project, Crumble Cookies interior alteration of two existing vacant storefronts in the North Court Shops Plaza, and then an interior alteration project for Pioneer Physicians Network in the Chase Bank Plaza. That's just north of Court Street on Reagan Road. There are five major plazas along North Court Street, full of which are fully occupied. That ends my report.
Thank you, Mr. Claddish. Mr. Joe Toth from the LST, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through September, the life support team had 2,660 ambulance calls for the city of Medina. For all three entities, we did 4,090 ambulance calls, that's an increase of 218 from the same time last year. Thank you.
Thank you. Our Service Director, Mr. Nino Piccoli?
Thank you, Mr. President. Our city auction was held this past Saturday. It was well attended. We'll have the tabulations in a week or so from our auctioneer. We sent out a leaf fact today. We were, we had enough calls and felt that there was enough piles out in neighborhoods. We started in the northeast quadrant of the city. So we're asking folks to keep raking their leaves out, blow them out to the curb, and we'll send our trucks out, pick them up as long as the weather's conducive. The last item I have is we're planning on paving, resurfacing three asphalt streets. There'll be West Homestead, Between Court, Huntington, Bolivar Alley, and South Elmwood Extension, South Lafayette there. We're hopeful that the weather will prevail, and we could get those in. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Piccoli. Our Parks and also our Rec Center Director, Mr. Jansen Worley?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just an update. The Forestry Department is out actively planting trees this week. We have about 60 tree lawn trees that we're looking to install all throughout town. So they'll be out there working on that. And then, secondly, our Rec Center had a successful pumpkin plunge last Saturday. We had about 120 participants signed up. Of those, approximately 20% were non-members. So we're still making a good effort to reach those in the community, to highlight the facility. And I would also encourage people to visit our website, www.madinarec.org, to check out new and upcoming programs. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Worley. Our City Engineer, Mr. Patrick Patton?
Thank you, Mr. President. One thing to report, our project to repaint the South Court Street Water Tower is completed. Pending bacteria testing, we anticipate having the tower back online by the end of the week.
Thank you, Mr. Patton. Our Fire Chief, Larry Walters?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report.
And finally, our Planning and Community Development Director, Mr. Andrew Dutton?
Thank you. If you'll recall, a few months ago, we received a council authorization applied for our chip program for 2023, we've, or 2022, sorry. We've heard back from the Ohio Department of Development, and it appears we'll be awarded the chip funds, probably starting to distribute them in 2023. It was an involved application. Barbara Dzer and Sarah Tom from my office had a hand in putting that together, so that'll be $700,000 for cities of Medina and Brunswick to distribute to income-qualified individuals for repairs and for home projects.
Thank you, Mr. Dutton. Notices, Communications, and Petitions, we have one this evening, a liquor permit not to object to the issuance of a new D2 permit to Waffle O Waffle LLC, doing business as Waffle O Waffle, 799 North Court Street, Unit 25, Medina, Ohio. Move not to object. Second. Discussion. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Motion passes 4-0.
Thank you. Unfinished business, there is none this evening, which brings us to introduction of visitors. Members of the public will be granted the opportunity to speak on any issue or concern which pertains to the city during the portion of the council agenda devoted to introduction of visitors. All comments should be directed to the chair, and a reasonable time limit of approximately five minutes will be imposed. If there's a group, please appoint a spokesperson. Speakers should approach the microphone next to Kathy Patton there in the back, state their name and address that can be entered into the minutes. Members of the public will be afforded the opportunity to comment on another portion of the meeting as determined by the chair or vote of the majority of council members present. Is there anybody who would like to address council this evening?
Mrs. Thorin?
Good evening. I'm Karen Thorin. My address is 3677 Falcon Ridge Drive, Medina. And I'm here this evening on behalf of Friends of the Cemetery. I would like to announce that Spring Grove Cemetery has received an additional designation from the National Underground Railroad Network to Freedom. The initial acceptance into the National Park Service came in March of this year and was for HG and Elizabeth Blake and their work as station masters on the Underground Railroad here in Medina. The addendum expands on this and validates the work of Lieutenant Colonel Herman Canfield and Martha Treat Canfield as operatives on the Underground Railroad. Herman Canfield was an attorney, a newspaper editor, mayor of Medina, member of the Ohio Senate, and a strong abolitionist. He was a leader in Ohio with the Underground Railway between the slave states and Canada. He died early in the Civil War during the Battle of Shiloh on April 6, 1862. Originally, he was buried in Old Town Graveyard, and his remains now are reinterred in Spring Grove. Martha Treat Canfield, Herman's wife, followed him south as he went into battle. After escorting his body back to Medina for burial, she and their two sons returned to the South to tend the injured soldiers fighting for the Union. While there, she saw the neglect of colored orphans who were often separated from their parents due to bondage and war. Martha opened in 1864 the Canfield Colored Orphans Asylum in Memphis, Tennessee, under the direction of Ulysses S. Grant, and went on to serve under President Grant in many ways. She died in Rhode Island in 1889, and at her request, her remains were returned to Medina, where she was interred next to her husband. They were both reinterred into Spring Grove Cemetery in 1897. The National Underground Railroad Network to Freedom serves to honor, preserve, and promote the history of resistance to enslavement through escape and flight, which continues to inspire people worldwide. There are currently over 700 locations as part of the network in 39 states, plus Washington, DC, and the US Virgin Islands. Spring Grove Cemetery is part of the National Park Service, and that is quite an honor. Friends of the Cemetery is honored to receive this designation from the National Park Service on behalf of the city of Medina. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Thorin. Thank you for all your work toward that designation, and thank you to Friends of the Cemetery for all they do to take such great care of the Old Town Cemetery and Spring Grove Cemetery, true assets for our community, and would not be the shape that they are if it wasn't for Friends of the Cemetery. Very, very thankful for all you do for our cemeteries. Is there anybody else who would like to address council this evening? Okay. We will move on to introduction and consideration of ordinances and resolutions. The first is to, I will make a motion to suspend the rules requiring three readings on the following ordinances and resolutions. Resolution 198-22, Resolution 199-22, Ordinance 200-22, and Resolution 201-22.
Mr. President?
Mr. Simpson?
I move to suspend the rules requiring the three readings of the ordinances and resolutions that you mentioned.
Thank you, Mr. Simpson. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Rose. Any further discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Motion passes 4-0.
Thank you. Our first resolution tonight is Resolution 198-22. We're going to recognize a young man on his Eagle Scout attainment. Luke, I'm going to meet you over here by the mayor, and I'm going to read the resolution from council. And then after I read the resolution from council, I'll ask for a motion and a second, and then we'll vote on it. And then we'll give you a chance to talk to us for a moment, too. But if you want to join me over there by the mayor? Okay, welcome this evening. Resolution number 198-22, a resolution congratulating Luke Patrick Fisher on attaining the rank of Eagle Scout. Luke Patrick Fisher is currently a member of Boy Scout Troop 501 chartered with the Medina United Methodist Church. And whereas Luke recently completed his Eagle Scout project titled Half-Pint Mobile Book Cart benefiting Project Learn, and whereas as a result of considerable hard work in the areas of citizenship, physical fitness, character, and leadership development, Luke Patrick Fisher received his Eagle Scout Award, the highest award attainable in scouting. And now therefore, be it resolved by the council of the city of Medina, Ohio, that the Medina City Council hereby commends Luke Patrick Fisher for his outstanding contribution to his community and Boy Scout Troop 501 in attaining the prestigious rank of Eagle Scout. That a signed copy of this resolution will be presented to Luke Patrick Fisher in recognition of his hard work and dedication in obtaining this award, and that this resolution shall be in full force and effect at the earliest period allowed by law. So just a quick note, I've got to tell you, I've known Luke for quite a while. He has a twin brother who we had here earlier this year, who also received his Eagle Scout. And if that wasn't enough, Luke has two more brothers that also have obtained their Eagle Scout. So that's pretty impressive, all from Troop 501 at the Medina Methodist Church. I know Keith, you have a connection there, too, and Mr. Wade. It's hard to think about that troop without thinking of Mr. Wade also. But we are very proud of you, Luke. I'm going to ask Mr. Simpson to make a motion to approve this resolution by council.
Luke, it's my honor to make a motion to approve this resolution for you.
It's my honor to second it.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll on the resolution?
Simpson.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Resolution 198-22 passes 4-0.
And Luke, just like we made your brothers, we're going to have you talk just a little bit about your project, and anybody you want to thank, and just want you to know how much all of us are very proud of you, and what an accomplishment for your family, too, to four Eagle Scouts. Very, very impressive. Well done.
Thank you. So my project was the pint-sized mobile book cart over at the Project Learn in Medina. It's to help providing, bring books in and help display books for the kids section. That way, it furthers your education and helps kids out. It allows them to be able to further everything they want to do. It's able to provide kids with a chance to be able to encourage others. I want to thank Mr. Shields and the Feckley Foundation for the, or the, the funding, I'm sorry, the donation, for making my project even possible. They provided it so that way I could build it, and I had my chance to become an Eagle Scout. I wanted to thank my friends and my families who have guided me along my journey, who have encouraged me and helped me through my rough times. So I won't take much more of your time, so I wanted to thank you on behalf of the Fisher family for all you've done for me and my brothers. Thank you.
My pleasure. And interestingly enough, I have to point out, his twin brother also did a project for the Brunswick Project Learn, and then Luke's half-pint book cart is here at the Medina Project Learn. So really, great work. And again, I can't think of a family more impressive than having four Eagle Scouts. And they sell poinsettias every year. They've done it for years. And as he and his brother are graduating, I need to find a new Boy Scout from Troop 501 to take care of us here. So longstanding tradition, but very, very good job. Thank you so much. Very proud of you.
Thank you.
Resolution 199-22, a resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission, authorizing the necessary tax levies and certify them to the county auditor. Move to approve?
Mr. President?
Mayor?
I'd respectfully ask that we table Resolution 199-22, as we need to pass that with the emergency clause, and that can be taken care of tomorrow evening, October 25th, at the special council meeting.
An emergency clause takes five votes of council, and we only have four this evening. So we have scheduled another meeting tomorrow at 5:30 here in council at City Hall in the Rotunda, and we will vote then on Resolution 199-22 as well as Resolution 201-22, so that we can add the emergency clause to those pieces of legislation. So thank you, Mayor. So that moves us on to Ordinance 200-22, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to solicit requests for proposals, RFPs for consultant services to lead in the preparation and adoption of a multi-use path plan for the city of Medina, Ohio. Move to approve?
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Dutton?
Thank you. Yes, this is a ordinance to allow us to solicit an RFP for a multi-use plan. Funds for the, the plan will come from around $50,000 of ARPA funding. As you're aware, the comprehensive plan touched on a lot of subjects in the city. One of them was multi-use plans. It evaluated our current system and recommended that we prepare and adopt an active transportation or multi-use plan in the short term. So this is where we have the comprehensive plan, and this is moving down to more specific plans. So once the plan is created, we'll be able to put together a more solid application to apply for grant funds for actual construction of multi-use paths and bike paths. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dutton. Any further discussion? If not, would the clerk please call the roll?
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Ordinance 200-22 passes 4-0.
Okay. So then also, with the final resolution, 201-22, we will need to table that one as well until tomorrow's council meeting, which then brings us to the end of the meeting here. And is there any council comments? Any? You want to go first? Mr. Simpson?
Thank you. The only thing I'd like to say again is, Luke, congratulations, and to the Fisher family, congratulations for raising such, you know, outstanding children. You've obviously done a great job. The only other thing, I want to thank the Friends of the Cemetery for their hard work. You know, it is so impressive to realize that our cemetery, excuse me, is part of our national parks system, you know, which means you, to visit a national park, you don't have to leave the city of Medina. So, and I know that, Karen, it was, it was not only you, but Teresa and your staff, it was really hard to obtain this recognition, and we really do appreciate that. I ask that you keep the countries that are in turmoil in your thoughts and prayers, in mainly with Ukraine and the other, other countries that I meant, that I didn't mention. mainly with Ukraine and the other, other countries that I meant, that I didn't mention, but deserve. Our world is such a crazy place right now, and it doesn't matter if you're a Republican or a Democrat. It's important to realize how lucky we are to be able to live in peace. A lot of areas around the world don't have that luxury, so you should appreciate that and show your appreciation by getting out and voting. Early voting has started. And the only other thing I'll say is, remember to be kind to one another. It does make a difference. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Simpson. Mr. Rose?
Thank you, Mr. President. Luke, congratulations. You know, the world needs good young leaders such as yourselves. Thank you for filling one of those roles, and Mom and Dad, congratulations for raising such a fine family. Friends of the Cemetery, always a great job. Thank you very much for making Medina, another example of making Medina why it's such a great place to live, and our ties back to a long time ago, and keeping it going. Thank you very much for that. On a little more current subject, for those of you who don't know, the Friends of, or excuse me, the Committee to Stop Government Waste lost their fifth lawsuit against the city, so they're 0-5. They've wasted the city's money to the tune of nearly $100,000 to prove that they were wrong and we were right. With that money, we could have purchased two police cars. We could have paid for one police officer for about 10 months. We could have paid the salary of any one of our department heads for an entire year and most of their benefits, too. So the next time somebody asks you to sign a petition with yelling at you saying, "The sky's going to fall, the sky's going to fall," don't, because it'll just end up screwing the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lamb?
Well, actually, next time somebody asks you to sign a petition, just make sure you read the writing at the top of the petition that's required to be there, and then you can make your own decision whether you actually want to sign a petition or not, because all petitions are not bad. Greg, was that lawsuit filed by the Committee to Stop Government Waste?
I think it was filed by Dean Maynard.
So it was not the Committee to Stop Government Waste?
That's correct.
That was just referenced, correct?
That's right.
Thank you. Luke, congratulations. I probably said this, this to your brother, but my only relationship to Boy Scouts and an Eagle Scout was my father, and he viewed it as such an important part of his life that when he was quite an old man, he still talked about the experience and the work he did to become an Eagle Scout and the impact that it had on his life. You know, it's clearly not one of those, those passing things. It's not like that meteorite that shines brightly momentarily, but it is that constant, that constant understanding of things that are important that actually help us, help you guide yourself through life. So congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Lamb. If there's nothing else, we are adjourned. Again, congratulations, Luke. Thanks for being here tonight, and thanks for the work you did on that Eagle Scout.